Okay, good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We like to call the public hearing the word. This is a recent meeting of the public hearing that we started on the seventh of June. They continued it to build the night concerning an application of the town of Andover with the applicant seeking to construct the community center at 25 School Road and proposed project consists of 2,386 square foot building, parking and associated site work. If you haven't signed in on our little attendance list up here on top of the freezer, please do so we know who we had here tonight.
You're fine. Can you just wait one second? It's just coinciding. One sec.
Well, the people that are here at Town Hall, we're trying to get them to sign in so we have a attendance list. If when we get to the public speak, if you're speaking, we'll make sure we get your name for our minutes. What I thought we would do tonight is we have the applicant update us on the changes of the site plans since our last meeting. The commission will ask questions about the updated items. I'd then like to review the list of concerns that we got from the school superintendent following the last meeting in the town's response to those. Then we'll have public comment and the commission will decide whether or not we're ready to close the public hearing and proceed at that point. Any questions before we start?
As well as Chairman, for record, Mark Brines. We asked people to sign in so that the secretary had those on the spell or names and so on. The Freedom of Information Act doesn't allow us to require people to sign in if they don't intend to speak. It's helpful to know who is here, but if you for any reason you don't want to sign in, you don't plan on speaking, you don't have to.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll turn it over to Eric. Those people that joined us virtually, you can make sure you're on mute until you're trying to talk. I appreciate that as well.
Okay, Chairman Larson and commission members and members of the audience. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the town of Andover is back to present the second half of our application for special permit for construction of the community senior center in the Andover World Design District. Again, representing the town will be myself as town administrator. The town's attorney Dennis O'Brien is here to answer any legal questions. Matthew from BSC Group is here representing the engineering firm. Serge and Eric Sanders are here from Leading Edge, who's the builder. And Eric Sanders, I believe, will be the construction supervisor on this project. In addition to being a town resident and parent of an ADS student. Additionally, Matt from Egg Arch, who has seen our protective record on this project is here. So I thank you, and now I'm going to turn it over to Matthew. And he's going to walk you through the, you know, site engineering changes that have been made since the last meeting.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Steffen, project engineer with BSC Group. So we'll just go through the changes to the plans that happened since the last meeting. There we go. So here we are on sheet one. This is the drop from the sufficient survey plan. So as we discussed last time, we have added the approximate well location seen right there. That has been added to the plan. And then we have also removed the pickleball courts from this plan since they're not proposed part of this project. And we are showing a the proposed drainage that helps. All right, so moving on to the so moving on to the next sheets. This is G1 with zero. So we have added a legend for the project set as requested. So this legend covers all the line work and shapes and hash styles that we use on the rest of the plans. And then we have also added a comprehensive parking table to this plan. And it basically demonstrates that currently the town, this property has more than the minimum required number of spaces. And it actually exceeds the maximum number of spaces. So by removing a few as part of this project, we're actually getting closer to what the maximum would be. You can see there's a negative net gain. So we moved on to sheet C1.0. The only thing I wanted to discuss was the lot impermeable area. So we are showing a significant reduction in the percentage of lot coverage, considering the whole parcel. So you can see the existing parcel is about 64% lot coverage. And once we merge the parcel and account for the proposed improvements, we reduce it by about 40% and 21% lot coverage. So on sheet 2.0, one of the comments we had between the town and the commission here was to provide some form of water quality treatment. And so what we've done is on the previous plan, if you remember, there was a couple of conceptual green gardens on the, you know, one over here and another one over here. So we've eliminated the one on this side. Instead, what we're doing is we're going to formalize this one a little bit more, make it deeper, this one on the side here. And rather than capturing a roof runoff, which is relatively clean to begin with, it's going to actually capture the runoff from the parking lot. So we modified the drainage system so that during local opens, the new catch bases will collect water from the traffic circle, discharge directly to the basin. And that's been designed to hold the water quality, so we can ride water quality treatment. As that water fills up, it'll start to spill into the beehive grate here to overflow. And then as well as in this catch basin here, we actually have an overflow pipe for higher flows. So that it'll be able to discharge directly into the main line without backing up into the parking. And then for the, what we've done with the roof now is we'll be flexing all the downspouts with the roof layer blaster. And we'll be piping it off towards the north. So that will come around over here, kind of goes through the pickleball courts where originally shown. And that will discharge to the level spreader, which is essentially just a, you know, a piece of concrete roughly 10 feet long that allows the water to dissipate and floats without any energy behind it, rather than channelizing the flow, decreasing the velocity and the velocity potential. I think Eric has brought his team to discuss site layout.
Sure. So one of the questions with the concern from the commission last time was we showed elimination only from a single standard. So we did hire a light load designer to come back in and kind of reassess the whole site holistically, as well as model the existing flood lamps that are currently shining on this area. So that is what this diagram is. There are some caveats in that, and that is that we can't get the exact fixture descriptions from the utility company. They gave us the number of lumens and everything else is is an estimate based on the actual fixture type. What the designer did say was that there's a trade off between how high you angle them and beyond a certain point, you're no longer dark sky compatible. So, you know, he basically set this up the way the lighting is now. But he also said there is a concern that in the lowest, in the first two handicapped spots there, you might be closer to the minimum end of the lumen scale. And he said you can easily tilt up the light, but that that should be done after all the lighting is in. And you basically put a light meter on it and adjust the fixture till you've got the intensity that you want. So we also show the egress lighting on the back. And we don't show the egress lighting on the front, but only because it's encapsulated in the circles from the two existing standing lights. But you can see right on the side, we've one there and there's a second one basically right there at the two exits of the building. Does that answer that question? You have any other lighting specific questions? Okay. In that case, I'm going to turn it over to Matt from Egg Arch. He's the chief architect on this project and he can talk you through the rest of the building stuff. Since you didn't have the opportunity to hear from him the last meeting.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Pegolo with Egg Arch Architecture located at 236 Main Street in Portland. We started last week. Short, P E G O L O. So as part of the design build team of Leading Edge, we worked with the town fairly closely on these plans. I'm not sure, I wasn't able to be here at the last planning and zoning meeting. So I'm not sure exactly what was presented in terms of the new plan or any questions came up in the dark. So I'll just very briefly walk you through the design as to what we ended up on as a result. The building uses two floors. We have a basement level, which is a walkout at the rear. And then we have the main level, which is at street level. And then you would access the main level from the front. There's kind of one main entry with a little gable over it. Very quickly, just started the front of the basement. So you can see, you know, the little dormer over the main entry. So that's considered the main entry. Once you walk into the building. Can you see the cursor over there up there? Up there, yeah. So once you enter the building, you have an airlock vestibule to help keep the conditioned air inside. There are two ADA accessible bathrooms in the facility on the first floor, as well as an ADA accessible transfer shower, which you see located in one of the bathrooms. On the first floor, we have a conference room. We have a small kitchen. We have a storage area, an office, a small multi-purpose room. And then the majority of the first floor is the large multi-purpose room. In terms of the layout, the layout is very close to what was initially presented to the town by the previous architect. I think it was Moser Pylon, who the town paid for the designs. We're merely bringing it to the next step, refining a lot of the detail and making it, making it real. The building was heated and cooled with ductless mini split systems, which are very energy efficient. So there will be no real fossil fuels being burned in this facility. The ceilings, something interesting I wanted to kind of talk with you about. The ceilings in the main multi-purpose room, the large area. We are proposing a vaulted ceiling, so similar to this. I mean, the ceiling slopes up at the center. The rest of the buildings or the other, you know, portion, the half of the building will be a black ceiling. We are doing this to make multi-purpose room feel bigger, larger, less confined. We're also hardwiring some ceiling fans and, you know, it really help cover that space, which is all being done via a trust, a trust system. For the basement floor, in order to avoid lots of columns and lots of interference with the open space, we are doing a center steel beam running up the middle or in the middle of that open space, which you can see here. And then the floor joints are in a way where they're flush with the beam. And then they are bearing on the secondary wall, which helps frame the downstairs bathrooms, downstairs mechanical room and downstairs storage room. So we were pretty creative in trying to find a way to restructure this building to avoid a lot of columns in the basement, maximize the open space for whatever that that space will be used for. The, in order to avoid elevators in this building, there are no stairs connecting the basements, the first floor. I think that's pretty important. I'm going to kind of point that out to you guys. The basement is accessible, like I said, through those two means of the rear. We have a double door and a single door. And then again, we have the ADA bathrooms downstairs. Both floors are a flush condition to the grade, which means the wheelchair can very easily go in and out of these doors. There's no step, there's no additional ramps, none of that would be required. And then I'll just briefly talk about the exterior elevation. And there is a small pains that I did to the exterior elevation, which involves the signage. So you see, let me see if I can zoom in here. So this is the plan that was presented last time. I do have an updated printout, but the change is relatively small. So we essentially just made the signage a little bit smaller. I put a border around it and I add some dimensions to that elevation. So it's 15 square feet of total signage. It says Andover Community Center. Some of you may be curious as to why the roof is asymmetrical, right? Typically, you want to see the ridge in the center. So this is done to maximize the solar, solar capacity of solar panels that would potentially come in the future. That's part two of this project. So this is to maximize the exposure to the southern sun. So when we do put solar panels on this, we can really maximize that area. We avoided putting any plumbing penetrations on the roof, again, to maximize the solar panels. But we do have two very small vents for the bathrooms. We felt it was appropriate to vent that out on the roof, but it's exposed to the socket. It likely won't interfere with the solar panel system itself. And you also don't want that, maybe offhand, close to the sidewalk or street level. In terms of plantings, what you see here in the elevations are placeholders. You know, I'm sure there will be, you know, nicer plantings than what I'm showing here from our 3D modeling software. But I just thought I would point that out. And then in the rear, the two entrances into the rear elevation, popular screen here. Both rear entrances also have a covered canopy over them to protect from rain. You know, protect the hardware, the door. Part of this product, I believe it's an alternate, there is a stacked block wall along the west, the west elevation here. And then we are proposing a concrete slab. Almost like a little patio to be a basement building there, which could be used for outdoor activities, with even the potential for a pergola, pergola or a tent or something like that in the future. And then that retaining wall helps bring the grade up, so that whole side of the building is level. And you could really utilize the landscaping there for an outdoor event or gathering or something like that. You can see this lab a little bit here in the rendering, kind of those two lines, that one there. In terms of exterior finishes, everyone's curious what this thing is going to look like. In order to keep pots down, we were asked to provide, you know, horizontal vinyl siding, asphalt shingle roof. We did try to accentuate the trim, corner trim, some trim across the gable ends to help kind of break up the facade. And then we also have an alternate, if the budget allows, for either a different type of siding, maybe it's a shingle siding up in the gables. Or we're even looking at an alternate with like a thin brick base. But again, that's all very budget dependent. So if the money is there, the town would likely make the decision to go that route. But right now we are just discussing kind of the main base bit, so. Elevations and some perspectives.
If we're done there, what I'd like to do next is ask Agent L C if the concerns that he had addressed at the last meeting would be satisfactory, addressed.
Yes, with one exception. And it has to be a lot covered. The applicant has shown that there's been reduced overall lot covering on the combined lot. But yet it still exceeds the 10% max allowed for the regulation to address. Eric, let's do that.
Yes, you are correct. It still is greater than the existing thing of a lot coverage. Greater than, I mean, that greater than the existing, greater than what the what it allows, but it also depends on how you define the lot. And that's what I'm trying to share is. So what I wanted to talk about is all the individual parcels that compose this greater piece. The first one is 11 School Road. That is a 70 acre parcel. It's got just under a half acre of impervious surface, which nets out to about 0.7% lot coverage. 17 School Road, which was the original 40,000 square foot building lot for this building. 0.92 acres, about 0.581 acres of impervious surface, which nets out to about 64% lot coverage, so way over regulations. 25 School Road, which currently has effectively zero impervious surface. This proposal, if we make it, would add roughly 5% lot coverage to that parcel. And 35 School Road, which is the Andover Elementary School, has approximately 3.2 acres of impervious surface, which is just under 30% lot coverage. So currently, the town property and the school property do not meet the zoning regs in the ARD. They do meet it if this was an industrial or commercial zone, but clearly is not. And it meets it if this was an industrial or commercial use next to the ARD zone. But it does not as it is. So the question becomes, what is the property? And the town is arguing that the property is really the contiguous municipal property, which is a total of about 84 acres and contains about 4.5 acres of impervious surface, which gives you a total lot coverage of around 5%. And you can also think about this if you take away the school property from the equation and just think about everything else that the town owns. The town plus the fire department, you know, comes out to around 1.8% lot coverage. So pretty small number. However, if you take just the combined parcel, which is this piece right here that we're standing on, plus the parcel we're planning on merging, that does equate to around 21.8% lot coverage. So that's the basic explanation. It really depends how you as a commission decide to consider this. Whether you consider just the property or whether you consider, you know, all the properties together or in what fashion. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I guess just to explore that a little bit. I think the town defined the lot by putting the property lines for the thing on the town. Would there be, would there be any downside for the town to merge that 70 acres with the you're going to merge the Town Hall property and the community center property? Is there any downside emerging in other big chunk of land to bring that into compliance with the regulations at this point?
So from my perspective, the biggest downside is we don't have actually a survey date on the big parcel. And that's a really expensive proposition if you want to, you know, go back out and now survey another 78th parcel. If that is the direction the commission wants to go, then what would be possible to do would be roughly to merge not the entire parcel, but using the last reference point that we have on this that was surveyed, which is right there, basically just draw a straight line between that and the initial block order. That would not be a subdivision because it would not create extra parcels. It would, we are essentially starting with a total of four parcels now. If we did that, we would reduce it to a total of three parcels. And that would be just under the 10%. So if the commission is adamant that we get under the 10%, that would be how we meet that. From a practical standpoint, I'm not sure it really does the town any good. But that's, that's a commission decision that is not a meeting decision.
It only does it down in Arvo. It's benefit of complying with the regulation. It's what we're here to talk about. Eric Brines?
For the record, Mark Brines, just for clarification. We were saying above the need for the survey book. But if I saw that, if you start correctly, if the parcels combined, it's like 1.77%. Correct. Right? And the maximum is 10%?
Correct.
So it doesn't seem like you would need a survey to establish compliance when you've got that big margin.
Well, the question just becomes, you know, how do you, so we know that this area is well defined and well surveyed because we just paid a contractor to survey it. All the backland is not surveyed and we don't have that. So now, I mean, ideally, I'd like to post a map that I trusted and was accurate. I wouldn't necessarily want to post something without actually surveying the property and knowing exactly what it is. That would be my own concern with it.
I mean, and that's legitimate. The other thing I'm pointing out is that as long as the commission can find compliance and we've got, when you're, when you're within compliance by a factor five, it's doubtful and certain that it's going to produce such a huge discrepancy as to take you from 1.77 to over 10. And that would be astonishing on a parcel this size. So that's, that's just, I'm just putting that as an option, okay? If however you choose. If, however you choose to do it is fine, but, um. Uh, but I don't, the surveys is nece- is necessarily required.
Okay, so, I mean, that would be, I mean, if, if the town asked to merge the parcels. To get zoning approval, clearly we'll merge the parcels, we would prefer not to go. And I'll leave that at that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this point, I'll ask the commission members if they have any questions or comments. Or do you Scott? Ian Blanchard?
Typically on the plans.
Yes.
No.
Okay, Ian, great.
I just have, with the inside of the building, what provisions are they making for acoustics? Putting a large ceiling like this, listening to the echo in this room, how are they going to prevent that problem in the new building?
Yeah, would you like to address that?
Um, so that was actually, I'm sorry, I'm Peter Mandel, floor member, um, and I've been in my personal project. Um, so we actually addressed that in a couple of ways, um, some of it is going to be material on the flooring. Uh, another thing we did is, one of the reasons this room suffers so much from its issues is because there's so much glass area. Glass reflects, it's a very hard surface, it's very clean surface. So that, that's part of the problem. Also, although Matt says it's like this building, it's really not, it's a much, when we talk about, when we talk about a pitched roof. Um, it's gonna be a scissors style cross, whereas this is just an open frame. So it's gonna be much lower than this, um, the angle is not quite as sharp. Um, and really, a lot of it is also how you place them, so, um, if we still have an acoustical concern once the building is built. Um, we can look at, um, the tray bases and things like that, um, much less sensitive to do than in a building like this, because. We actually priced out acres for the room, and it was almost fourteen thousand dollars to get acoustic boards in here, so. Um, going with normal windows, things like that makes it a little more manageable to manage. Um, so we, we feel that it's not really going to be an issue in the space, um, but if it is, we are, we are, we already kind of have plans and just. Is that, is your comment?
Anything else?
Um, the thing at the outside, have they considered something else to make this stuff fit more with the town? Like maybe shutters on the windows or a chippula on the top, something like that, or would that be added on later?
We actually did look at a lot of different things, um, we stay away from brick because brick is a, from a, from a long-term point of view, really an maintenance issue, and it's a. Much, much more expensive, um, build that way. Um, our hope actually is that, we, we've sort of, we've sort of given you the most basic design. Um, our hope is that as we come out of the ground, we haven't had any issues, and we're gonna have some money in the budget to make some more. Um, and we have those as alternates in our, in our design plan with the, with the architects, um, and we've gone from budgeted. You know, but, um, something as simple as just changing out that siding, for instance, it's like a twelve thousand dollar nap.
I was thinking of shutters, I don't think they're terribly expensive.
So, yeah, so we didn't really look in that direction, because if you look around with the surrounding buildings, it's just not something that's on them, we're trying to sort of fit. You know, like if we had smaller buildings that had shutters, we certainly would have looked at that, I mean, that's one of the reasons we looked at the roof, for instance, is that. It, it did serve a secondary benefit from the solar point of view, but it all matched this, so, um. We certainly want to look for those details, but we're hoping those details are things that, you know, we can possibly add down the road. You know, the goal was to keep the building under twenty dollars, because as soon as we cross a million, there's almost a forty percent surcharge. Um, when we go to, uh, Davis Bacon, which is still building labor laws in Canada, get four of them.
You had anything in plans saying, well, in the future we'll do this, or in the future we'll try that? I didn't see that set wise.
Yeah, no, I'm, it is, it's, is in our, our contract agreement, but it's certainly. Um, we want to present you with what we know we can at least provide, anything we can get beyond that, certainly, plus. Does that answer your question? Is it, is there any other questions apart from this building or?
Ian Hutchinson, are you out there, did you have any questions? I thought I saw your phone pop up on screen a couple of times.
Yes, I am, I just have a, a minor point, it's a, just a question. Um, is there any significance, I see that it's called Endover Community Center, and I think at our June seventh meeting. I'm not positive that was the meeting, but I think someone asked Eric Anderson, um, about it being used as a senior and community center, and his response was, yes, it's both, but it's. A little bit more of an emphasis on the senior center, I was just wondering if there's any significance to not having the word senior in there, just for, uh, clarity. Especially for somebody who might, you know, be coming from out of town or something, saying we're not gonna have a separate senior center.
No, so I, I actually saw that, and, you know, it was actually something I had to address with architect after the fact, that we want to make modifications to that, that it's gonna say both. Um, it really is both, um, and there's reasons for having both names on there, certainly for grant purposes and funding purposes, so we want to try to have both on there. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, that's actually something we just need to.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just point out one other thing I didn't notice in the plans? Um, on the exterior plans, there's two parking spaces that are along the school side, um, those are actually being removed. Um, and it was something that was brought up, we did a site walk a while back, and it's, um. Um, brought up as a safety concern, that if they. You know, kids coming out in between the bars, and because we're already over on the parking spaces, we'd like to remove those.
So are those spots removed from the drawings we looked at tonight already?
Brought up, and I don't know if they're on the part set, I didn't have to. Thank you.
They're still in the plans, they are not including the parking capacity.
Okay.
So they were going prior to the parking.
Yeah, so they would need to be removed in the plan set by correction purposes, okay, I just want to point that out.
Ian, any other question?
Sorry, did you, did you call on me?
Yes, I guess I should get any other questions, well, it was your turn.
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Uh, I'm good with the plans.
Okay, um. I know on the community center's side, when we were looking at the architectural drawings. I did not see the box around it, and I only asked that. You know, when I went through and did a calculation from the previous thing using. The height of the building is my guide for, you're close to ten foot, it came out to thirty two square foot, so. We're saying we're down to fifteen square feet, which does meet the regulation now, but I didn't see where that was included anywhere in the drawing.
So we only got that today. So it was not included in the package, but I didn't have time to put it in the packet, but there's the rendering.
Yes, so there, they got. I'm not sure if people online will be able to see this if I don't move too much.
Actually, I think if you go back and put it on there, the camera was focusing on you, and it was showing up, okay.
So the, uh, yeah, so the sign is here, I made it smaller, uh, put the box around it, um, so it is six feet wide and two and a half feet wide. And I aligned the top of it with the head of the windows, and then signed it, signed it in the windows there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And then with the, with the change, you know, I'll, I'll maintain that same square, I'll just change the, the verbiage.
And I know at the last meeting we talked about, uh, there was a desire to put some construction signage up for the project. And I didn't see anything about that in the updated site plan.
Uh, no, we did not add that to the site plan. Um, I think probably leading edge could talk to you, could, uh, describe their planning work. Construction site.
So Eric Sanderson, project manager, leading edge construction, um, so typically what we do for onsite signage is. We have all the stakeholders, right, so we have the town, um, part of the school, and, and we have the residents of the town. So what we'd like to do is have, look at all submittals. And in those submittals, we will have properly placed documented signage. That as we start to begin, we go into contract, file a contract on the construction drawings. We will present those in a shop drawing to say which type of signs we'll have in specific locations. Those would have to be approved by all the parties before the construction process begins. Um, so if there is any comments from any people needing specific assignment, we're happy to accommodate, um, and that's. Ideally how a normal construction project goes.
Now, would these signs be signs that, uh. Listen, the project team, or these signs that are saying, warning, don't jump over the fence?
No, so I, I'm not personally gonna put my phone up around there and be like, you know, project team, call me.
Yeah.
Um, but the, the right stakeholders will have those numbers, um. You know, oh, we are more than willing to meet with the school, um, like I said, I have children that go to this school, I have another one going to the school next year. Um, more than happy to meet with the town and school on a regular basis. Um, to talk about, you know, the next three weeks of construction, what we can do to make it safe. Uh, but the signs are mainly going to be liability signs, right, so things, uh. Construction access, no parking, um, you know, we're, we've been talking to the town about potentially putting up jersey barriers between this section of. I guess you'd say the parcel and the, the school to eliminate that access, uh, for parents and alleviate that concern, so. Um, as the project moves forward, we'll start to change the plan a little bit, construction fences will start to move in, the signs will slowly change as we start to go.
Okay. Scott, I heard no comments on my limitation. Good, good, we're, we're good there. Very good, okay, great, the, uh. And I think that's all of my questions at this point. Eric, if we could, what I'd like to do next is. Go, you know, call up the list of questions we got from the school superintendent last week. And go through the town's response to those questions, you know, I, I see that was, you know, documented in the record, but just for the other folks here. And to give us the opportunity to ask questions if you go through that. I don't want to take a lot of time on this one, but I want to make sure that we hit those with the.
Okay, so first of all, both fire chiefs and we fire marshal, both in the room. So if you have any questions regarding their responses, I would suggest you, uh, ask them directly because they are here. Uh, do you want me to read their responses, or do you just want me to put them up on the screen, or what would you like me to do?
For this one, let's just, everybody. Well, I don't know that everybody back here, why don't you read the response, uh, I, I think, I can see if I'm a little.
Okay, fire chief's response, hello, we can certainly work on the evacuation patient plan with your E O P. I believe this usually comes over to me to sign in early September at the beginning of the school year. As far as bringing a truck up to turn it around in the proposal area, that will not be done on grass, truck is too heavy to take off a paved surface. There's a vehicle parked there, it will be tight, but not impossible for the truck to get through, Ron Mike, fire chief. Fire marshal's response, I measured the distance from the fire pond to the end of the parking area at town hall, where the proposed senior center is being proposed. Uh, or where the, sorry, I misspoke that, same sentence, so. It's less than three tenths of a mile or fifteen hundred and eighty four feet. The layout of the senior center looks good, egress doors, sizes are not provided, they should be a minimum of thirty six inches. Uh, there are no mechanical or electrical drawings in the prints, they will need to be done for project sign up, will be done as part of the building permit. Access to the rear of the elementary school appears to be adequate, the lower no curb should be considered in the single handicap parking spot. And the access to the garage under the school's gymnasium. If you remember from the schematic, that actually had, uh, only about half of that curb. The lower half going down towards the garage was uncurbed for that reason, the town also proposes to switch to a capecod style curbing. Which is a much flatter curving section, um, in that area.
It's not on the plan now?
That is on the plan now. Uh, duh, 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 access to this area will have to be monitored during construction, plan review will be performed when the permit for the project is submitted.
Okay, so before we go off of that, and Jerry, I don't know if you want to talk to this or for the half hour, but. I was curious as to what the evacuation plan was today, and trying to envision how achieved is when you put that. Uh, interaction fence around it, trying to make sure that we, uh, we take care of the ability to get the kids out of there, so where do the kids go now?
It depends on the type of evacuation, plus.
Yeah, in fact, why don't you, let's go to here, we'll bring that to the podium here, I think we're gonna go back and put the review there, because that. Then it will save you some time blocking.
Um, it depends on the type of evacuation, um, there, the fire drill routes are easier, um. To maneuver in terms of where the kids go, it is the evacuation where it is, um. Important that the children for crisis, um, situations be evacuated from the property and they go over to the fire department. Um, and that becomes the safe refuge place, um, for the children, and so right now. They leave our building and they move to the fire department, um, via the empty space that's here now. So that's what we would have to work on together, making sure during construction and then after construction, um, those are settled. And yes, it is required that if you file with the state, uh, the person, September is when we usually go, make sure that you guys have that assignment.
Now, one of the, uh, so when I looked at the drawing that showed the construction fence. Thinking back to the sidewalk that we did, you know, I know we had a discussion where the fence was gonna be five feet beyond that point. And then when I looked at the drawing, it showed the construction fence much closer to the school. But it looked like we still had ten to fifteen feet between the school and the construction fence there. From what I saw, that was okay to get the kids out of that emergency exit door of the gym?
So we did talk about that, um, when fire marshal visited, um. The problem is not having them leave that door that we need to make a change with. It's once they leave that door for a regular fire drill or evacuation, where they go to safety. Because children can't go into the parking lots, it's full of parked cars, because there's three of five rows that come out there, plus we have child in a wheelchair. And so we did come up with some ideas for what we might do, um, it would, and I think that might be one of the jersey barriers came about too. Um, remind me again what you call it, you say you have to have a point of what?
Um. You're even the bottom of the slide?
Public way, that's right, and so if you exit that door, there needs to be a makeshift public way. And we talked about using, um, temporary, uh, fencing, like the yellow and the orange temporary fencing. And creating a, an access way for public entry, uh, way, so that they could go over to the gazebo area. and creating an access way for public entry way, so that they could go over to the gazebo area from there. And the fire marshal said what we would need to do then is to have more of the temporary fencing that would also go around the handicap exit from the gym. Because right now there's a gap there, and he said he wouldn't want to see children jump off and come close to the site here. So we just have to make sure that we have a way to do that. But, you know, in talking it through, that that is the concern of going in that direction. And what we would need then is just simply during construction and after construction, what is our method of getting the kids to the virus?
Did you were satisfied with the feedback from the fire chief and the fire marshal with respect to the turning radius in the circle out in the front?
Well, he said we wouldn't get any vehicles into the backside there, but that we didn't need it, he said. So it was just an answer of it's not going to happen, we won't have that.
Okay, well, you know, there were, there are things we could do, but I think, you know, the drawing, that's why we have the scaled lines and so we can do that, those kind of calculations. And he said it was a standard turning radius for emergency equipment, so I think, I trust that as opposed to, you have, there's a lot of the chalk circle out in the middle of the parking lot and see if the, the ambulance can navigate it or whatever. But just trying to find how close we are to, thinking that you're convinced we're trying to take care of the kids.
Well, I definitely believe that, but he was, he was clear though, we would have to find another way to get back to them. But the emergency vehicle wouldn't go back there. For writing reasons.
Where is back there?
From the, right now, from, from the circle back.
Okay, so I guess I thought we had a, and Eric, this is for you, I guess, I thought we had sort of a path that you showed it. Going back there behind the school where we would potentially take an ambulance or something like that, but.
Whether they choose to take the ambulance on that is, is up to the fire team.
Okay.
Want to be responsible for getting stuck. But they certainly have the capability to get back there. I mean, they have a four-wheel drive rescue vehicle. They also have a, a, a PD with a timber, you know, so they can certainly access.
But they have everything, everything they have today, they will have after construction. Correct. Okay, go, got it. Let's go on to the next one here, Eric.
Okay, the next response was the response from PSC Engineering. I'll let Matt come up and read that, my voice is shot anyway.
And that, I know you put the fueling station on the drawing, we didn't point it out, and we probably should have, but at the time, I think that would suffice for reading your verbiage, just trying to get feedback here from the school that they agreed that we could do. That okay?
Do you want me to go back to the plan and bring that up?
To begin.
It didn't change from the last time, but still an area designated. I can talk to you.
Well, actually, why don't you just not do it here, because everybody in the room will be able to get a, a sense of where you were talking about putting that. I think from what I saw on the drawing. To just talk us through where we'd be and why you chose that.
Sure, so we'll be located in the existing parking lot for the fire station. You typically want to be fueling areas in a paved surface because in the event of a spill, now you're not having it getting to the ground or that, so it is sort of contained. And now that's considered, you know, assuming the secondary containment measuring, measures of the fueling area have also failed. So, you know, the fueling is always, you know, protected with multiple measures. What's likely going to happen is the contractor will actually just deliver fuel, mostly just diesel to the site to fuel up, you know, excavators and other equipment like that. And that delivery will just be placed and then it will leave there, aren't they going to store fuel on site? So it's really just an area that's designated during construction, that's just a temporary place for the different vehicles to fuel up. So there's, there's no storage of fuel, there's no big fuel tank or anything like that sitting on site. Is that the answer to your question?
It does, and Jerry, you're okay, okay with that? Okay, thanks. I guess next, the next question up concerns the schedule.
Eric?
It's getting lots, and one of the question was.
So, well, so the, the school. And when I say the school, I do sincerely appreciate the questions that we got there because it was from a different perspective. And it caused us to think about things that we might not have thought about other, and so. So one of the things that I was envisioning, probably maybe falsely, was that when, if, if the project got approved, how soon would the excavator start doing the site work? Because one of the ways to protect the kids would be to get the site work done soon.
It's a great point, right? So, so the construction process works as this. So once we finalize, if we get approval, we move forward with the project, we're going to go into the RFP stage, right? So we have to bring it back up to bid for all of our subcontractors. That is going to take a few weeks. Once that happens, we can mobilize quickly and then we go right into clearing, grabbing the site. We get right into our deep foundations or excavations, which would be any deep manholes, excavating for the foundation. And then into our shallow excavations, which would be any utilities. Our biggest deliveries are site work, concrete, framing. Everything else is very small deliveries with very minimal crews. So we are looking to a nine to ten month schedule for the whole entire project finished and closed out. The sooner we get started, the less disruptive it would be. And, you know, we, we again have to go out to bid, we have to do, have the right fiduciary responsibilities to keep this under the budget that we want to keep it under. But we are looking forward to getting this started as soon as possible.
So, a good deal of the summer vacation, unfortunately, we over one way or the other. By then we actually start the excavation, will probably be, not days, but close to a month before something actually starts happening.
Um, potentially, yeah.
Okay, I, I didn't understand that you're starting over from the request with proposal piece and.
Sort of, we have finalized drawings, so initial phases were based on a certain percentage of drawings. Now that they're finalized, we have all the input from the town, then we can go back out to bid again.
Jerry, did you have any other questions on the schedule at this point? That info that I didn't have before.
Of course, you asked, and I appreciate that, that, I have no other questions, I just don't see, things take time.
Yeah.
And your school calendars are set well in advance.
Yep.
And you have to live with what is involved with getting to the point of getting the site work done. It's going to be the most important part of it. And if it has to be for the kids in the school, it's going to be taking the party to our life. I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'm gonna try to speed up the process just a little bit, and the next question that I see here was, you know, to cease running or idling equipment during drop off and pickup point. And it sounds like, you know, the construction team agreed to put that into the RFP to make that a requirement. So I think that probably met your desires with respect to that.
Wait a second, I don't believe we've agreed to that at all.
Okay.
To cease idling during pickup? No, the, the town would be happy to agree to not have deliveries that can likely pick up. But we can't stop the construction site twice a day for half an hour or forty-five minutes while we pick up. So if it costs places, that is way too high to consider.
I just read it says, RFP, no deliveries could be made between those, those stops. And I, I do think that's a satisfactory compromise to that. How's that one sit with you, Jerry?
It's okay, I, I'm just getting concerned with the kids being there.
No, I, I know, and.
That's the only thing.
We're concerned with that too, and you asked some good questions, and so I appreciate, you know, having questions, if we bring those up more.
And we can talk to you, that's fine.
Okay. And that's what discussed, the principal will lead by us the updates on construction, the shared regularity with families. And my, whoops.
That, that should have said by legally, not by monthly.
Okay, that probably, I think that's what we read in the, in that. My.
I mean, I, I don't know, let's be quick, so I send immediately updates to the schedule. I'll send it those to the town, they can share after a nice few.
And, and what I was hoping there was being the same report that, the same report goes to everybody. We shouldn't get one report going to one group and another report going to another group where we're, we all want to see the same information, and I think that makes it easier for you. And so as long as, as that comes in, in a written format, so we can all share it. I thought that was the greatest. Where will the dumpster be located during construction? This could be a hazard. The, the response was location of the dumpster will be within the construction zone secured by temporary fence. And any other, your concerns about that? And for the commission members here, you've got concerns if we're going through those things, please bring them up too, I only want to go through them once. The loading zone can be typed be posted, please to avoid issues. And I may have been, I thought we were talking about loading zone following construction. Were you talking about the loading zone during construction or both? Talking about, oh, okay. Eric, I don't want to talk to the town anymore that I've already done. I'll let you talk about the loading zone concept following completion of construction.
So, following construction, we have proposed that, for instance, we're, we're not anticipating major deliveries. I mean, given the types of uses that occur in a community slash senior center. You know, we're not talking about large point deliveries. You know, the only real loading, loading would be the seniors and residents when they come to the fence. And we will bring up the, one of the senior buses and unload seniors in the circle. That's really the intent of that area. We did add per the request of the concern that there be people potentially parking in the circle that would block access to either the school or to an emergency vehicle. We did add, you know, you know, no parking signs essentially, or no parking strapping on the whole surface. With clear that that is for temporary loading and unloading only. It is not designed to be to add any additional parking to satisfy that request.
Okay, and I think that makes sense, is there somebody that would be wanting to talk to those, I guess during construction, there is no loading zone. It would be going in through the construction fence and dropping off materials, is that, that's right? Yeah, so it's not a loading zone during the construction, it's not there. Okay. Next on my list was the additional comment from leading edge, and it was from Serge, and it just talked about, I think, the Jersey barriers in there in Valerie had already talked about, to evacuate murder, the evacuation plant to make sure that the, the kids can evacuate there safely. So I thought that was, yeah.
And the only thing I would know is the town would use mafia blocks, Jersey barriers, Jersey barriers of a specific height. Okay, mafia block is just large square, uh, brief, but it will accomplish the same purpose of prohibiting vehicle traffic from getting through there. We're using those because we already owe them a lot.
Okay.
So, Chair, just for the regular, your, your draft motion says concrete barriers are approved, you prevent.
Okay.
So it's that, that's your draft that addresses that, it's about whatever, whatever's most practical.
The next comment had to do with the two mature trees over by the school. And from what I read, they won't be impacted by the, the construction. I think that's far enough away, any concerns about that? Okay, then the, and these are probably out of order a little bit from what they came to us. The next one concerned documentation on the proposed septic tank and its exact location, so we can see this in reference to the playground. And again, I think the, the punchline was that the septic tank work is all inside the construction fence, separated from the playground by fairly good distance. So it looked like that could have no effect on the safety of the kids. Fueling station we talked about, the emergency vehicle turnaround and the floating area we talked about. Trees we talked about. Will there be apartment designated to the community center? We do not wish to say that any and all elementary school parking is also a community center parking. Eric, would you like to address that one there?
Well, the, at least from the town's perspective, we've always considered that all the parking in the municipal area is essentially shared parking. The other day during graduation, you know, all the parking spots along here were filled because the whole lower, the parking area at the end of elementary school was in use. So they use ours, we use theirs. You know, sometimes we spill over into fire department spots, sometimes we spill over into yards. So I think that we've demonstrated that regardless of whether you take in which type of parking or end of elementary school or not, we're well within the regulation in terms of minimum parking spaces provided. And I think because combined between the school and the existing town hall and the fire department, we're considerably over the maximum number of spots allowed in our regulations. That, you know, adding additional spots would not be, you know, if anything, we should be removing more spots to meet the regulation, not add it yet. So that would be my response.
Okay. Anybody from the school have any concerns about that? Yeah, I thought that was a reasonable question, Eric?
I think, um, I was going to raise a comment, but different what Eric said. I believe there's two regulations that might be affected by the community senior center. And one is twelve point eight one of the town zones under regulations, which concerns shared parking. And one is twelve point eight five, that concerns common parking. They were, well, twelve point eight four requires legally binding documents. And evidence that satisfies, oh, and twelve point eight five requires evidence of perpetual cost adjustments. This is what the board of education has been saying in the months now to the town, which is the legal that under the law. And under the county and city regulations, a memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding, it is required. To address um at least the parking situation, if not all the other situations. That we propose to the first selectman, the wire and saw it open, um came during our joint meeting last Wednesday. Um but I would just point out, twelve point eight point four, um this commission has defined that. There is, when there's a schedule overlap of peak parking periods, we don't know if that's going to be the case. Um legally binding documents, status actually to the commission. Have been compared to filing on the land records, so in my opinion, in my whole way. Um that doesn't mean that you can have draft documents, you have to have documents that are very defiable. On the land records and satisfying the commission's um requirements. Twelve point eight point five in requiring perpetual cross easements. And again, I think it's it's down to the difference in opinion of various boards of the board of here. The board continues to assert um to this day that the triangle that is uh referred to. In all of the documents, um. We believe is under the control of the Board of Education, um gets separated out and I want to say that. The town's own maps and site plans. Um show that it is under deep lines and whatnot, um under. The purview of the Board of Education, but that continues um to be an issue. Um I would ask that that's not the case, why the warranty deeds and the survey that was done by the town. Um and the warranty deeds are filed with the town's land records, refer to land as quote unquote school grounds. Or refer to school bike routes, if in fact, it's all the town's property, which is what the town continues to assert. They don't think there would be that legal distinction. Secondly, why is the school responsible out of its own budget to, and it's separate from the town budget? For the maintenance of the school grounds and students' parking lots. If in fact, it's all town property, that can be the case, and we are currently responsible for all of that. We're responsible for contracting with our own maintenance of grounds, uh law keeping and whatnot. And you've been responsible for all the maintenance of the upper parking lot and lower. And again, that brought me to my earlier point, which was. I believe the two zoning regulations that suggest that not require. That an agreement be reached between the town and the school about the shared parking and the common parking. Um that will need to be required for the community senior center purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just Jim, you want to come in on that? Just record Mark Red's council commission. You can't, the same owner can't grant himself an easy. You can't have a contract. Between one party. There has to be, in order for there to be cross easements, there have to be two owners. There is only one owner. Therefore, you can't have an easy. Now whatever, whatever side contracts the board and 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 general town want to work out is maintenance and things like that. Is is certainly up to them, it's not a zoning issue. But there there can't be a cross easement. For one owner of five. Can't have a contract yourself. Okay, so I, so I think that the twelve point, I I think I agree that twelve point eight five is is a. Uh I think it should be addressed in the motion approval, if you see to do this. Um then I'm, I'm working on some language now, but I don't think it, I don't think you need crosses, you can't get one. Doesn't exist.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
I'd just like to reply really quickly to the comment about maintenance. Uh the town maintains basically all of its own paved surfaces. Uh the town of Endover Public Works plows your lots. They salt your lots, they sweep your lots, they clean the drainage basins on your lots. They went up and repaired when you had sinkholes in your lots. Um to state that the town doesn't maintain your parking areas, I don't believe that's a correct statement. Um the town plans for all its paved surfaces. Now, it may not maintain it to your satisfaction. Because, you know, we have somewhere around seventeen million dollars worth of paved surfaces in town, of which you're a portion. Um and we're not maintaining them all on perfect standard, we get that, but we definitely maintain it. Um that's all I wanted to say about that, unless you have further questions for me, Mr. Chair.
No, I'm all set. Next item. Was can assign for the handicap spot here in the garage be placed on building fencing. Building three up that area for wider available backyard. And the response is the contractor will use gate cod style curb or eliminate entire maintenance area. It's easier to drive over to access the end of elementary school ride. Due to the rate chain, trying to directly over the curb and straight back would not be practical. Doesn't sound to me like that answered the question that I was expecting. If you're talking to. Can the sign for the handicap spot here in the garage be placed on the building, clean up that area for wider available leeway to backyard? Can somebody address that particular question?
Uh would not be appropriate to drive over the back of the handicap spot and then try to drive down the hill. The grates are are too steep there for vehicular traffic, so that would not be possible, by the way.
What does that have to do with putting the sign on the building? And I thought there was probably a regulation that said where the sign for a handicap spot has to go, but.
Well, there is that also. But even if you could, because the the signage will be in two points, the first will be painted on the roadway, that doesn't affect. Where you can drive, and then usually at the end of. The parking spot, there is signage for indicating that it's a handicap accessible spot. But the school has asked is that that sign removed, you put on the side of the building. But then A, it would not line up in the parking spot, and B, even if you did remove it, it would not be safe. To use that to drive over for e rest anyway, so the town doesn't believe you gain anything by doing that.
Okay. Next question involves smoking on the school side of the construction site. And after the community center building, what the town already stands on smoking to align. The school property during the school second time. And with that, you know, that's a town ordinance, not a zoning regulation, and so. I figured we would not solve that.
And I would happily support those smoking uh on town property, personally, but that's not my. My decision, that's a town decision.
We already talked about maintenance on the. Uh the parking lots and. The question above that, you know, talks about the CGS ten two twenty, two twenty. Worrying about the need for an MOU, I want to uh hold that in abeyance. At least at this point for a few minutes, I think. I I certainly understand the school conditions that that. They would like to have an MOU, maybe Shannon's uh. That comment about parking, you know, I think there are a couple of places, a couple of places probably not appropriate for zoning. Sounds like maybe parking is, I'll take a look, get those words and go through there. But that, you know, that, I think if the list of comments that we got. From the school superintendent in. I guess at this point, I would ask that, you know, the board event Gary or school superintendent Valerie, if you had any other. Concerns or questions, I I do think. You're, you're kind of worked together to come up with what I think are kind of satisfactory answers.
What, and you know, I sent you a.
You did, yep.
And in that letter, I just want to. I'm in favor of this community center here, and I'm a fan of my fellow. And I want to thank the people who work hard. Trying to make the sound. I think there is no reason why all this paperwork here we had. All taken, and just the wire people for the last four years, it worked really well. And I think that as the town, we should be able to work together. All creatures. In a friendly, nice way, respectful way. And talk whatever comes up. And I sincerely believe that. I have no record, no mouth, I don't feel supported by. And my life speaks, us all work together, and when things happen, we move that.
Figure in in the, I don't know if it's appropriate. For that to say, but your letter, we started talking about where. Where we might have started going off the rails a few years back, and I think it's time where we tried to put the senior center into the elementary school. I thought that plan was going okay and got derailed. But the letters I've seen, you know, whether it's Dennis O'Brien's letter on the support for the application. He thinks that. It, and Mark Grant said it does as well, that you know, the application from zoning perspective is good. I know your lawyer, do you folks have a different viewpoint on that, and I don't really know how to reconcile that. But my. Desire would be to hear you say, Jerry, exactly what you did, that you had a good meeting. And maybe we're starting to get over where we were working at odds. Uh and think we work together because, you know, the three takeaways I took from our last public hearing were. Town wanted a community center, the town wanted to take care of the kids, and the town wanted us to work together to do both of those things. And uh so I I'm hoping that we can find a way to do that. And that's all I'll say about that for right now, but I appreciate your letter here, thank you for submitting that. So at this point. Do, does anybody on the commission have any other? Questions or concerns that we should talk about before we talk about closing the public here?
Comments or things, but I don't know if it goes now or during the planning zoning condition later.
Well, I didn't know either, but I just said to Jerry, and so, why don't you tell us and if we're. Out of bounds, we'll we'll hold it for later, but I do think, yeah, hearing your bus to the public forum is probably. Good where we can get some feedback on it before we close the public hearing and our audience can do that.
I know that in the past. Uh like Erica said at one point that no MOUs were necessary. But I've looked very carefully at the plans for the community senior center and would. We'll have a few points that I think need to be addressed. Um in the past, when we had superintendent Doyen, she offered the use of AES senior center. They had MOUs agreed upon, and I think we could do that again. Uh the town and the school should be good neighbors and agree upon a variety of questions by using MOUs. I agree that we can't probably do easements because the town does own all the property, but we can use them on use. Um and it's several reasons we need an MOU. Number one, Percy Hook needed land to the town for a school. At some point after the original, the he increased the area for the school slightly. When it was needed, and he gave another large portion for the town hall and the firehouse. It's true that the town owns all the land, but the portion for AES is now dedicated to the school. And that line can't be moved just because of the new building project. Connecticut law prevents anyone, including the town, from taking back land from a school. Only when the school closed and the building is not needed for educational purposes anymore. Can the Board of Education return a property to a town? The piece of land in question here, this little triangular piece may be small, but still under the school's jurisdiction. Just as you cannot, well, be a little bit pregnant, you're either pregnant or you're not. This small section is still under the jurisdiction of the town, of the school. Now AES is willing to cooperate by agreeing to an MOU, and then it would be great. They're welcome, they're not saying that you can't use it, but we want to have an MOU.
We being.
I think that we, the town. The pub plant, I'm not sure if it's the planning and zoning, or if we should require the town to set up. You know, the board of selectmen to do the MOU with the Board of Education. I'm not sure.
And that's, that's a fine suggestion, but it's not something the zoning commission can impose as required. It's something.
Why?
It's not as, it's not zoning, it's.
Okay.
You can't impose, we can't say to two parties, you two have to agree, you two have to get together and reach.
All right. Well, then, number two thing was the common parking, section twelve point eight point five. I read there that what is by special permit, the applicant may submit a plan that the commission will allow common parking for multiple purposes and multiple uses. Um. And it's talking about the perpetual cross easements, but. I think that it has to include access and maintenance agreements. That is where they need to have an agreement, the MOU, and I think that our regulations can require that. Um even on this new plan.
And I do think that that the things you're discussing are probably better covered in the deliberations amongst the commission. And those are things we have to consider there.
All right, I'll hold on.
I'll go out on a limb though, we we've talked a lot about the MOU, Shannon mentioned the parking thing, which is is a. Planning and zoning concern. I didn't see any other comments about what kinds of things should be. In the MOU, and I was particularly looking to see what the planning and zoning. Height might be. Because I don't think that, you know. The yard work on the school property is is a planning and zoning issue, certainly. You know, and I I'm a fan of MOUs because the devil's always in the details, and that's where it is, but I tried to come up with. I think we addressed the safety issue, which the zoning regulations require us to uh to assess. But I was looking for other things that might be a zoning topic. And and I, it was hard for us to come up with that.
We did get, um, I think the way that I'm sorry to bother you on a turn, present to uh. First level and wire and selectwoman came last Wednesday, um a fully drafted. Memory of agreement, not a memory of a candy.
Okay.
That uh that addressed all the issues that our attorney and the Board of Education. Um had thought needed to be addressed in the second afternoon.
Okay. It.
I don't know if it was me to be able to do, but we started to make it available to the commission.
That would be, that would be helpful.
It's irrelevant, it's kind of like inside.
Would would kind of, well, okay. I guess it would be, we have a copy here, so if we were to close the area and go to deliberation, we could, we could see the MOU that that should be part. You know, if we want that to be part of the planning and zoning discussion, we ought to be able to see what it is. There might be pieces of it that are applicable, pieces of it that aren't. But we are talking a lot about an MOA or an MOU, and I certainly don't know. What it is. We're we're saying that we should hold up. Action on the application because of it, and I don't know what it is.
But what what difference does it make what it says, if you can't condition your approval on forces to importance for reaching here? Maybe, you're right that safety issues have been raised, and are zoning issue. Of access, construction safety, and so on and so forth.
Yep.
But. How how does a zoning commission compel two parties? To, to sign him? That's, that's a new one I need to. That's, that's a new one I need to.
Well, I don't know. It might be just that there are things that. That both parties can't agree to, there might be some things that both parties can't agree to, and in that case, you eliminate what you can't agree to and put in what you do.
Well, I don't know, to the extent, to the extent that, that any of those are zoning concerns, you've asked people to tell you what they are. And they have. And the applicant thinks they respond to them, now you may decide they haven't, okay, but. I mean, it's incumbent on someone to tell the commission. What other zoning concerns, a little bit of health and safety concerns they have.
Okay.
And, and, and who's going to power what is not a health and safety concern, that is, that is a matter of. Who plows what, who maintains what, um, all those kinds of things are, they're legitimate issues, I'm not demeaning the issues. They're just not zoning issues.
Okay. Understood. Before we address further whether we should close the public hearing, I know I have ignored those folks who attended virtually. And, uh. Is anybody out there? In the Zoom frontier, have any comments for the commission at this point? And I'm kind of looking for hands to go up on, on the screen there to let me know that you might want to talk.
Good, 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 healthy. Can I add something to the public record? It's from the town engineer. It's his comments on plan revisions.
Okay.
That were provided to address the stormwater. Management concerns. That way, if anybody, I'm assuming that's a comment, would like to have it on this.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, Jay Calzey, zoning official, Seventeen School Road, the Secaring Community Center, Seventeen School Road, Annover, Connecticut. As you're asking, as requested, we review the following information received from the subject property at our office in June nineteen, two thousand forty-three. Item one, calculation sheet regarding siding in June twenty, June twenty twenty-three, verified PS, C three. Item two, seven thirteen drawings titled, Annover Community Center, Seventeen School Road, Annover, Connecticut. P L G A notice, eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, last revised, June eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, verified P S C B. We have the following counts, one, calculations should be submitted for the siding of the stormwater, by assistance along with bypass outlets from catch base number four, the proposed rain garden. Two, calculations should be submitted for the siding of the rain garden with regards to the storage, stage storage discharge. To demonstrate that the facing will retain one foot of freeboard and not over top and impact the adjacent park area. Four, three is missing, but provide a standard P L for the proposed level spread. Five, for consistency of terminology, P L sheet five, entitled rain garden, as opposed to five infiltration swell. Six, we would recommend that upper soil layer for rain garden, twelve inches depth, and be a blend of fifty to seventy percent sand, thirty to fifty percent topsoil. With an average of five percent organic content, the soil mixture shall underlay by six, twelve inches. Clean washed ground, additional, a planted bench should be provided, polyam, bait of crops, grass, and irrigation lights. If you have any questions, please go over to contact me, Ray Curly, yours, Joe Yellins, Dave, Dave and Jacobson Associates.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if you may, those are part of the conditions that the town was happy complying with that.
Let us hear. Is she doing her special hand up, Joanne?
Thank you for, um, listening to my little, um, public speaker. Um, as a citizen of Annover and. Been present at a multitude of meetings, you know, regarding this project. Um, and you've all, I give you all credit for coming to all these meetings, answering probably the same questions over and over. Until the satisfaction of everyone, you know, I was present at the board event meeting last Wednesday, I believe it was. And, you know, Jeff McGuire was there along with Paula. They did such a great job of working together, going through point by point of any question that would be raised. Um, answered it again, you know, the committees presented this, um, I'm just hoping that everyone will come together. For everybody that's volunteered, put in time, put in massive amounts of hours, I understand everybody wants everything to be safe. And I really have no doubt that it will. So with all of the time invested, I really would love to see the senior center slash community center go forward. For the people that I've known, the seniors I've known in town for over seventeen years, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. And I see no other hands raised on the screen, is there anybody? Out, uh, in the Zoom that wanted to make a comment? Gary Dunn, uh, okay, so we're back to the commission, is the, uh, is there anything? That the commission feels they are lacking that we need to discuss before we would close the public hearing? So that we don't get ourselves in the situation where we did with the Dollar General and wanted to ask a question right off the bat and we're not able to. So we speak now or forever hold peace.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, note that I saw that the inland wetlands agent indicated that there is going to be an application now that the. Fueling area, rain garden, and attracting pattern, the upland review area, um, I don't know if anybody's stepped back yet.
I, I did, we must have had a see, he was telling me some of these adjustments would require probably each approval. And, and he was asking that you can issue approval, it could be, but my response was. Wetlands compliance is required by even a condition of approval, so you complete the motion or not?
Okay, thank you.
Just to direct this. 請你給我一個證據， approved.
Within the other.
Thank you.
And if the commission wanted to address it, the town, it's, it's. It's pretty close to being out of the upland review area, because you have a hundred foot upper of the wetlands. The town can move it up in the plan set, if that's your preference as a commission. Um, there's no reason the fueling area can't move another thirty feet to the south. To get it out of the upland review area if that's a concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Adrian.
Um, this is Paul Connick, that's okay.
Say again?
Paul Connick.
Okay.
So as someone who's been involved in this quite from the very beginning, and been literally going with meetings for over two years. We have done everything possible to be inclusive of all party involved. All of our meetings were open with the exception of construction meetings that were, were posted in public because it was, it was. Didn't require. Um, but even in those meetings, we actually, um, school reached out that they wanted somebody on, on our, on our committee, and so we, we sort of represented from the school. And it's actually very helpful, Chris, because we like kids and stuff, because he has some background there. So, um, and, you know, Chris also gives a lot of input as far as. A safety thing, you know, we went so far as actually put in our construction agreements that, you know, whole paragraph is done on school safety and the fact, you know, not on the contract. So in the very beginning, we've been very much aware about, ever doing work and, and what the end, end result needs to be, ultimate safety standpoint, the council. I think my concern when we talk about MOUs is that it, it feels like the, it feels like there's a push to put an MOU on this. Um, when really those are the issues that are being addressed, don't really have anything to do with the community center, they have to do with. Town, school, things they haven't worked out on their own, for whatever reasons. Whether it be that the school not reaching out to the town and asking for it, or the town not being clear about what they do and don't do for the school. You know? Um, and in the end. An MOU on a, a triangular piece of parcel doesn't work, because that building's not going away. And the implication in the MOU since it's always been come across that, that somehow, and MOU is a memorandum of understanding. But it can be repealed, the school could change their mind, town could change. Right, memoriam can, can come and go. This building's going to be learned, even if it's the school, you know, it's the town, you know, we're, we're entities that need to work together. But the idea that we have an MOU on a, on a triangle isn't making sense. Should the town get together, the school would figure out what their parking on situation is, yes, I've been saying it for years, the settlement wasn't important, that the school should be. Going to the town and talking about, you know, when we do paving, that we talk about paving the whole block, you know? You know, I tried to get the town to address, when I was on the school board, that, you know, where the, where the buses are over there, there's a little sinking area, that's a problem, where the, where the. Where the, um, where the trash containers are picked up, when the truck picks them up, his wheels are sinking. So there was two areas in the parking lot that needed immediate attention. But those were never vast, and, you know, candidly, the school member actually reached out and said, hey, we, we would like to get these addressed specifically, or send the letter, right? So there's communication issues on both sides. And those need to be addressed by the town on their own terms. It shouldn't be something that's forced, and, and it's inappropriate for this commission to, or even discuss, and I personally. They do, do need to be addressed, and I think you're right, but I don't think this is the place to do it, and certainly not undergone. You know, they're not preventing whether that building gets built, it's not a safety issue, it's, it's a problem with communication. But it doesn't affect the vote, you know, we're shipping. So that's my own take on it, um, like I said, our meetings were open for two years, you know, and. I don't know what the animosity that started this, I wasn't privy to those meetings that happened at the beginning. Um, but, you know, when I was approached about whether or not we wanted to include the school, what we could do, like I said, we put somebody on our meetings. And I even went for the effort, trying to do a specific sidewalk just for the school board. We'll walk them through the documents, walk them through where things were up here, sometimes it's hard for people to understand things. Unless you, you see them, you walk around, so we took the time to mark things out, mark up the turning circle and things like that. Um, and I hope that helped in some way towards addressing some of these safety concerns. Um, you know, the parking had come up, the parking spaces and, you know, blocking off access to the other side and, and all this, so. It sounds like we've had at least some agreement on those, and I'm glad to hear that. Um, but I think beyond that, um, I think, you know, that's where the commission's duty lies, is, is where it's, where it's sponsored by. You know, that's my own take.
Okay, thank you. And I do agree with Adrian's comment that there are probably communication issues on both sides, as I look at the. The different letters that have gone back and forth, I, I see that. Each side thinks they've been trying to be collaborative. Each side thinks the other side hasn't been as collaborative as they would like it to be, and, and hopefully we're, uh. On improving trend with, with respect to that. But, uh, going back to the commission here, I. I don't see where anybody has anything else that they want to get input from before we close the public hearing. So at this point, at eight forty-four, I will close the public hearing. And at eight forty-five, we will open our special meeting to deliberate the application. Okay, well, I'd say forty-four, close enough, I would like to call the special meeting of the planning and zoning commission to order. First item is we'll call and see to the coordinates. I see we have Anne from April present, Scott Versand is present. Leanne Hutchinson is present. Steve Nelson is absent. Anne Blanchard will be seated for Steve Nelson, and I am present to twelve. That does a new business, destruction, application of the town of Vandover, the applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a community center. Consisting of two thousand three hundred eighty-six square foot structures of the apartment site work, twenty-five school road, in accordance with section five of Vandover zoning regulations. I guess, you know, I'd like to start out, do any of the commission members have any concerns about any zoning regulations being met? Now, I do think there's a couple of things, solutions that, that, that we can put into some dishes of the people. But I think as far as safety of the kids, we've, we've done. An okay job of trying to foresee what we can foresee, it's, uh, take care of that.
One other, I had, um. Access to the back of the school, the fire marshal told us to pretend that it's not going to be access, that there should be. A driveway back there, and we've got this big arrow on this map. So there must be access, and I don't know. It was a matter of grade, uh, according to our regulations, driveways can't be over fifteen percent grade. And it looks like it might be more, it's not hard for me to figure it out, so that's what our regulations.
Okay, and, and that's another, it's a great question, we probably should test before we close the public hearings, we could have got.
You didn't want me to say a bit more, so.
I, I think, you know, from what, what we talked about during the public hearing was that. The access will be at least as good to the back end of the school as it is today. I'd have to go, you know, get out the, the topographic. Map, which, but it looks like.
That is looking for.
It looks to me like. It is exactly the same in the future as it is right now. And so. They've got, what they have to. With.
School, so the ones that can still get back there, now this dotted line said that they would.
And there will be a gate in the construction that allows access back there as well.
Not, not saying the fire trucks have to get back there, just a vehicle in the future should be able to get back.
Yep.
He's a member, and they haven't lost his nerve, but I'm not saying the fire should kind of, they didn't, they're satisfied with the access.
Well, I think what they said was, at least what Valerie had told me, that they're not going to put a fire truck back there. They don't care about the building, they can get the kids out, but they don't care about the fire truck getting with the back.
What I heard tonight was, we won't, we won't get the fire truck back there, no matter what, but yeah, I need, I thought I, you know, need to set it.
That's what they're saying, what I'm saying is. Can anybody else get back, it's a smaller deal.
I think an annual speaker back there. You know, that's really what I'm worried about is, you know, if there's a medical emergency or something, that you got the ability to get the ambulance.
So that one's. I can, I'm really troubled by this triangular piece of land. That the town says they're going to be taking. I mean.
I'm, so I, I share your concern, and I can absolutely see that from the, uh, school's perspective, they would have that concern. So here's, here's what my hope. There's only, the, the school is concerned about setting a threshold. We spent a lot of time going over the school's concerns with safety of the kids. I'm sure that. We have heard from our land use attorney, from the town's attorney. That there's a little bit of a difference, there's a difference of opinion there that, that we're not. The only way. You would get that. And that wouldn't even be satisfactory, is if it goes to the. Like the little house down in New London, next to fire. like the little house down in New London, next to fire. The, and, and so my hope is that we've worked together with the school to address their concerns for the safety of the kids. And they're not in opposition based on the zoning application. If the board of ed were, who are three with the women, that's not setting a precedent, they can save that precedent for sometime where they disagree with it. I would hate to see point zero in acres be the downfall of, of everything that, you know, everybody worked so hard on in, in the town. And all of us in this room say we're in agreement of doing.
I guess the plans are good. Why does the town think they got to redraw the line? That's.
They'll just set grab. Because the gazebo, the gazebo would have been less than the required setback from.
Yeah, but why not just keep the line where it is? So what if it goes through the circle?
The, the gazebo would then be violating setbacks. That would exist.
No, this is on, this is on the term of the mark where we put that one state over. And I think.
I know you will change, they changed that to avoid the gazebo. Why not just then just keep it where it is? Why are you doing this?
You, you needed to ask them that during the public hearing.
I think, yeah, I will, I, I think that lies in the town thought it was cleaner to have the project all controlled by the.
And the school board said they worked, they had them away.
You know, our attorney said that the town owns the land. Um, speaking for attorney Grant's here, the attorney was trying to, the, uh, that's what I got out of these correspondence from them, is that the town owns the land. And I can't bridge that, yeah, here with the zoning commission. That is, that is a, a different issue. I absolutely see where the school is coming from, in my work on the school board, I have that understanding too. But I don't think it's a zoning thing, based on what I heard attorney Grant's discussing.
Don't feel why they're moving along. Yeah, and go to a neighbor and say, you're changing the line. Why, the school has jurisdiction over that land. I know it's owned by the town, yeah, but the school has jurisdiction, so we shouldn't be taking that.
And I'm hoping that the school will say the project to build a senior center is important enough for the school, now, old triangle's small enough that that's not where we're going to make the concern. And I could be wrong. But that would be disappointing.
Probably not, but just not that piece of land. They're good, but they'll have to build it.
I'll go back and ask attorney Grant's thinking. Doesn't the town have the legal right to change the lot line and say it's suggested doing in this case?
Yes, any property owner that owns, joining properties can be figured, actually, the, the Supreme Court actually addressed that in context of seven. Um, the other thing is, based on the Saff report, considering issue with coverage, lot coverage, there may have to be additional mergers of these parcels in order to meet the lot cover. And then the, the fact that they don't have, there has to, there's some additional merger, so that the parcel, whatever parcel things are, complies with your ten percent lot cover. So that's something that, that, that has to happen whether they want or not, when the town wants.
So I know there was a disagreement, I could be able to come up with an answer, but I firstly, I have to go with the advice of our attorney.
That's good. The school is not paying to have another attorney here tonight, they don't have their attorney here.
And, and if the attorney was here, they would tell us exactly what we heard in the superintendent's comments and from Shannon tonight. And, and we're not going to bridge that gap here in this meeting. I don't, I don't know that that's a zoning issue. I don't know what it is, but it's not a zoning issue. Then and I do think and I don't like the terminology, the town and the school, because the school is the town. The town needs to work together in a lot of areas. And not be at odds over that small thing, you've got to save that disagreement for a bigger thing.
If it was five acres of their land, of the town, of the, of land under the jurisdiction of the school, just because it's a bigger piece, they wouldn't do it, anything about it, if it's a small piece, that doesn't make sense.
Those, those taking that small piece have any impact on the school? And I tried to, I tried to look and find where that impact, you know, I brought it to you.
I guess it's the principal.
I, I'm sure it is, and, uh, and I understand that, I, I, yeah. If, if I were there, I would feel exactly. But I would be trying to work.
I've been a teacher for thirty-one years, so I feel a lot of connection to school, so.
Yep, I got it. Okay. Any other questions from, any other discussion points from the commission? Okay, uh, just for point of discussion, I will make a motion to approve the application subject to conditions that we can discuss. Just because I made a motion to approve it doesn't necessarily mean that I would vote for it. It just means that when we make a motion, we have to vote to approve it. And if it's voted down, it's voted down. If we make a motion to not approve it, and it's not approved, then we don't know where we are. And so that's why we do it this way. So I will make a motion to approve the application subject to conditions of approval. And attorney Grant's.
I will second it.
Thank you, Leanne.
Mr. General, since Mr. Halcy prepared a, a draft motion that has a lot of the conditions that have already been discussed.
Okay. It's just a, I bet you, even now she doesn't have the means of getting it up on the screen already, but I.
Well, hold on, because as you've been talking, seeing about certain conditions that you feel you need to add, I've been adding to what you drafted, okay? So, wait, you can start, Mr. Halcy, but it's somewhat, I'm ready to share screen with things that I would add, based on what I heard tonight. Again, it's your motion, but, you know, I find this happens during hearings, people say, well, you made that initial approval, and then at the end, it's sure remember. So I've been putting them in as we wait, so that we, we would have them when we reach this.
And I appreciate that, because we always, we want to hurry to get to the end. And then we're left not remembering what we talked about. So I do want to take the time to go through, uh, these with a little bit of rigor. Okay, everybody should be able to see the draft motion. And the first condition of approval is, the pre-construction meeting, the contractor, relevance of contractors and applicants shall meet with the town staff and its representatives prior to the commencement of construction to go over schedule, ordination of construction, and any other matters deemed permanent by either staff and/or its representatives, the contractor, or the applicant. Is expressly agreed that the representatives of the Andover Elementary School and/or the Andover Board of Education will be provided the opportunity to participate in said meeting, noted will be provided in minimum forty-eight hours prior to all meetings. Any comments on the commission for that condition? Okay, let me scroll down to the next one. Contact information, the contractor shall provide town staff with contact information, including names, phone numbers, and emails for twenty-four seven emergency contact. Any update to such information shall be provided to town staff immediately. Any comments on that? Number three, revised plan showing modifications to address stormwater management concerns shall be reviewed and approved by Eastern Highlands Health District prior to endorsement by the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Minor revisions to the plan as determined by town staff shall be incorporated into the final plans.
My typo on that, uh, there's a, rant, parentheses, that could be removed prior to show.
I didn't know if you wanted to add more to the concerns, or, or just eliminate the first one.
I, I was going to, I, I originally had a lot of points here. After concerns, I, yeah, probably better, my original intent.
Okay, um, I was waiting for it to change up there, I recognized that Mark's screen isn't showing up there, yeah. So, so run by someone on the side, what you wanted to do there, Jim?
Yes, um, the revised plan is, and then parentheses, showing modifications to address stormwater management concerns. End prime, okay. Shall be reviewed and approved by Eastern Highlands Health District. Prior to completion by the chairman of the planning and zoning commission.
Got it, okay. Number four, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the contractors shall make necessary adjustments vertical and horizontal to existing lighting at the C O people number five ninety-eight so as to meet the lighting regulations contained within these zoning regulations and provide a counterband over with documentation of same. So that's what increases the lighting, the, uh, the lights on the top of that pole swivel up and down, and you can rotate, so we can put the light as shine where we want. That will fix up the lighting. Number five, instruction meetings, interim instruction meetings shall be held bi-weekly and include the contractor, relevance of contractors, town staff, and board of education representatives, so as to discuss progress, future schedule, and any issues that have arisen or maintenance issues. The contractors will provide written updates of the project schedule at such meetings. Item six, lot coverage. The perimeter lot lines shall be relocated at the north side of the subject property so as to bring the lot coverage into compliance with section eleven point two of the town zoning regulations. And I think, you know, the commission probably happy with either of the two options that, that Eric showed there, the one's cheaper for the town to do, uh, both options, you know, exactly.
Maybe you want to say, um, let's see, where to go. Uh, shall be relocated, or parcels merged, or otherwise to achieve, I don't care, do you care how they achieve the plans, they just have to achieve the plans. That's up to you. Shall be relocated or something to the property, or parcels merged, so as to bring them.
Okay, now in the perfect world, I don't know if we're collaboratively ready to cross that bridge yet, you know. What I was hoping, we would take that seventy acres and merge it somehow with the school property too, to eliminate all the the imperfections. I don't think we need that for this, but if that were something that the board of education would want to pursue to come into compliance with the lot coverage, and, and again, their grandfather didn't wear the arse.
It's just that we have a building, so we're increasing service with the building.
We got seventy acres that.
Oh, yes, right.
There, there's a way out there, I haven't looked at it, and, uh, somebody wanted to, to look at that.
And maybe it was, the lot line shall be modified so as to, I mean, I, I don't know if it matters which line will move to you anyway.
If that's something to consider, I reckon, considering whether or not that happens, uh, is not germane to the user being.
I knew what they do, the perimeter lot line should be lifted or set up subject property or otherwise, so as to bring them up government.
Okay. Number seven signage, the applicants will provide the town with signage detailed to determine compliance with the town sign regulations detailed with town's own regulations. On review and staff approval, the sign details will be added to the final plans prior to endorsement. The condition shall apply to all signage, including construction signage. Uh, I was satisfied with the presentation tonight that showed, uh, less than fifteen, or less than sixteen square feet, uh, on, on the building, so, uh, the sign on the building, not a concern mine anymore, I just want to, uh, know what kind of construction signage we're planning on putting up.
You needed, wanted to meet that condition, then you feel it's addressed, then.
We can, that'll be fine, yeah, because I am satisfied that there's there's nothing new that we need to do to, uh, the sign on the wall based on what we saw presented tonight.
But you know, what about the.
Silent, sign in the plans, is not the sign that was shown.
Right, yeah, the one, well, you should, you said revised. She's. Which is as not, because I, yes, you can't do that.
Oh, what's the date on that?
Yeah.
Today's day. Okay.
So.
So the.
Revised point, yes, yes. That's what I'm thinking too.
Did I get a comment on number five? Um, the school board questioned, requested that the principal be involved, and I didn't see that the principal was listed in, uh, construction meetings instead of the video we read.
I read that, uh, if, if the board event wanted to have other people like the superintendent for the principal, in addition to members of board of ed, I think that would be appropriate. Traffic circulation, the contractors shall provide installed concrete barriers with blue equal, so to prevent traffic flow between Andover Elementary School parking lot and the town hall parking lot. Blue equal shall be added determined by a zoning agent, areas shall include reflective markers on both sides to maintain visibility. This gentleman.
Chairman, it, it occurred to me after I put that condition in there, that I did not bounce that up, I want safety folks, and I'm only, uh, far more sure that is, that's, I have a concern about that or not. Kind of going in at the last minute.
He, he staffs, so he, he can comment after closing the hearing.
Okay. Do you have any you want to?
I have one of that Mike Jimson.
Okay, so Jim's condition that he wanted to put on the concrete barriers, some reflective tape or something, so that somebody driving in there can see the barrier ahead of him after dark and not hit it. Uh-huh, okay.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, no, I'm sorry, I've had them though. Actually. Closing circulation between the school. And the town hall parking lot.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, concrete barriers.
I mean, right here. No, so. I have to get some coming.
Oh, yes.
I mean, that's a, okay, in order to consider that. But I mean, anybody. Prove anybody from coming out. Okay. Not, not, not what I'm saying. Okay, there's still, to go in. It's just confusing. So I would like to add that. Before anything's approved that. School, town, anybody who needs. Reasons signs are. I think this kids do work with. Doing better and so on. Be sure these also kids, we, we open in the mild gym area, go to the same area, that's approved on all. Which kind of number one. Vision, I mean. It's everybody issues. I don't have to be conditioned, but just.
I agree with what Mike said, I don't know where that comes in the process, but certainly before school starts. We redo agree on what the evacuation plan, yes. And I know that the school has reached out to you for, for help on that.
Although his division has, there's, they show out.
I think we can add it, it's a safety item, it's going to get done. We could put it in as a condition of approval.
We kind of number one, but it's.
Yep. We can, we can add that maybe very specific. Item nine, construction fence. Construction fence shall be field located so as to allow the.
I'm sorry, before. I wanted, then I heard in that addition, I'm just looking where to go. I was saying. The contractor provides installed concrete barriers, you know, not. I put during construction. I don't think it means jersey barriers forever, you mean during construction. Yeah, I know that's a certain thing, okay, but the way it's written could mean that. So I add during.
Look forward to getting those removed. As soon as possible. Okay, nine, construction fence. Construction fence shall be field located so as to allow Andover Elementary School vehicular access to the basement garage. And provide ingress egress requirements detailed with any and all operational emergency plans about designing Andover Elementary. If we need, if we need to make adjustments to the fence. You know, to support that, I don't know that we will, but I'm sure that. The construction seems to be amenable to that as long as they give them their five feet. Distance from where they're working. Have anything else on that, Jim?
No, I didn't know what to use for the term, as far as port of events plans, I just kind of tried to catch the line there.
Okay, I think. You can put evacuation.
Operational slash emergency or evacuation.
Item ten, monumentation, all lot corners shall be pinned in accordance with the Andover subdivision regulations prior to issuance of building permit. And be shown on the as-built drawings.
And I'm sorry, where.
That was item eleven, item ten.
I must say, I'm having versions. Prior, I didn't have priority, did you do it?
Yep, I noticed that was.
Prior.
Subtle change from what went up earlier this afternoon. Item eleven, project address, revise the address of the project so as to read twenty-five school road on the cover sheet of the plans. Item twelve, filing, final plans shall be filed on the Andover land records in accordance with statutory requirements. Item thirteen, as-built drawings prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and as-built drawing prepared. In accordance with A two standards will be filed on the Andover land record.
Is that added too? Oh crap. I have, I have. Yeah, I've got previous draft. I, this came two, three today, so. I don't know how we can ask anything that we need to have, but okay. I'll do it prior. I have. Yep, prior to. English please. Okay, I'm conforming, okay. That's all right. I'm sorry, you, you, I didn't want to finish the.
Mark, Jim emailed above you and I at six hundred four tonight, that's what I.
Six week before, yes. That exchange, well.
You, you do have an email.
So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest I share my screen. And. Let me do that, see now. Oh, I've got so many things open here. Somebody more computer related tomorrow. Okay, all right. Let's see if I can share screen. Okay. See if you have there. We have, okay, so I, at thirteen, I just modified it to conform to the six. Then I add a fourteen, per the applicant's presentation, two parallel parking spaces located through the west wall of the school shall be removed from the final plans. Okay, fifteen. Scroll down so you can see this. During construction of the facility, there will be no truck deliveries to the site during the time period and students are being dropped off and picked up at the school. But construction activity will not be suspended during that time period. I think that's what I heard. At sixteen, in accordance with section twelve point eight point five, the commission includes shared parking for all town hall courses. Inviting the various users at different periods of peak occupancy. The mission files perpetual cost easements are not required. Because all the relevant parcels are in the same ownership and is impossible to send owner to bring the easement to itself. I discussed that one. Okay. And at seventeen, all items continue with lettered in June twenty, twenty twenty-three from the town engineer. Shall be addressed in the final plans in the satisfaction of the town engineer. Okay, and then prior to issuance of this certificate of occupancy, the town, the board of education and the fire marshal. Shall put buckets of evacuation home for the school. It was based on what the fire marshal was saying.
On that one. I think. That is too late.
Well, if an earlier condition, it talks about evacuation during construction. Okay, so this is. So this is.
There's a new plan.
It may, because evacuation during construction will probably be different than after construction. So, okay, so Jim, Jim already addressed the during construction. This is what Mike said. Once before it's occupied, he wants to know how it's going to work permanently, so that's what I told them.
Agent Nelsie, do we need a condition of approval that talks about the, the state's completion of whatever form they do for the shared well? Is that part of the.
Okay, my understanding is no, uh, given it's required for the standard carrying sign off. Okay. There's a community well with.
Well, yeah, but is it changing the community well now? Does it, does it serve, does it serve more than fifteen people?
It's a community well now, but I think it had to be resubmitted based on the fact that you've added a building to it.
You're, 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 if it were a new community well, then yes, you'd have to condition express to improve. But if it's an existing community well and you're just changing occupancies or whatever, then you don't, you can make it condition, but you don't have to. Because the department of bill has that jurisdiction anyway.
Okay, we leave that out. I know that the form submitted and standard area thinks that, yeah, anticipates that. Did you have any other changes in the first, you know, thirteen that we should look at for help?
Yeah, I took out that last thing just because that for the some explanations and part of the motion. And thirteen, yeah, I, I, I now have. See, can you see, yeah, prior, there we go. I added the language, Mr. version required. Thirteen, as-built drawings, I added the heading. Prior to the issuance of. I used to know that's. Which is what James Burge said.
Can you go back to the lot coverage? Or should I just want to do anything? And I thought that was a change.
Buck up a little bit, and so all the people here.
I just noticed we read a lot of the fridge section since there was a change from when Jen originally read it.
I would suggest probably more of them. So it's pretty much. Maybe one was worth it, maybe we'll use some of that.
Any comments on that? Very good. Any other commission members have any other conditions of approval that should be included? Okay. So the motion on the table. Is to approve the application to the town of Andover, construct a community center, park and associated cipher. In accordance with the application plans entitled Andover Community Center, seventeen school road, Andover, Connecticut. Dated May eighteen, twenty twenty-three and revised through. Changed it to June twentieth, twenty twenty-three and prepared by the P S E group with following conditions. And not the reason.
Seventeen school road, twenty-five.
That's what I'm saying, but it's titled seventeen, it's titled, it doesn't have to be taken twenty-five.
It's for twenty-five, so.
Yeah, property was seventeen school road at such time as it were, and that's when the, when the plans are gone. They were, plans are not there, that's just. Since been a. Current address on, on the title.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? A call for vote. Leanne permits. Again. Scott. Leanne.
Aye.
Ian Blanther.
Aye.
My vote aye as well. Motion passes by zero zero. I, I know. I heard the comments from the school superintendent that she thought the application wasn't quite ready yet, it was getting there. I agree with that comment. I think we've made a lot of progress in the last couple of weeks. I hope it may not. Appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put in into this project. And certainly with the people of the town expect us to go through. So with that. Move on to item four on the agenda, next meeting. Since July seventeenth on the agenda, truly July eighteen, that is on the town calendar is the eighteenth, so that's Tuesday. Anybody have anything for miscellaneous discussion? Hearing none? I'll make a motion to adjourn, a voice aggravation, any opposed, say aye. Hearing none, motion passes by zero. Thank you very much, everybody.